All right, I'm gonna make the motion to approve the minutes for December 30th. Regular meeting.
Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Motion made in second. Anything to add, Michael?
Uh, no.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I didn't say aye. I abstained. Public input.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Chad Brandon, civil engineer with Fields Sunlight as well. I was hoping that I could maybe present a couple of things to the board this evening as it relates to a proposed wetland ordinance that's coming before, I think, the planning board tomorrow night. My hope is to offer some, some understanding about what that ordinance could result in as it relates to some of the commercial industrial properties in town. And I've been asked to come here this evening by a few of my clients to represent, you know, how the wetlands ordinance in general, I think the, you know, a setback or a buffer from a wetland is not a bad thing for a community to consider, but there's a number of ways that it can be considered that's more productive to development and growth and primarily that most communities are handling that regulation through a conditional use permit process rather than through a buffer, a non-disturbance buffer. Seventy-five-foot non-disturbance buffer would be a pretty significant, really almost land-taking on a number of properties in town. And, you know, the town of Swansea has a lot of low-value forested wetlands, some of which have actually been, you know, altered over time. And there's really no distinction in the, in the current proposal. It doesn't address, you know, what about existing developments? It's very onerous on existing properties as well as certainly future development. So we have been working...
Before you open it up, what's your preference, gentlemen?
What do we want, we go? We have the board's meeting with their representative to the planning board in a little while. He's not here yet. Might make more sense to wait till he gets here if we want to.
I'm happy to wait if that's...
Might be shortly after six o'clock or so.
That would be fine.
Great. If that makes sense.
I think there's license.
Before you got too far into it.
We're starting too soon.
Well, reconvene. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Russo.
Good evening. Just a follow-up from the driveway request up Christian Hill Road, Mr. Doot Truck, Samantha Doot Truck. Since Metalar contracted, this is the last meeting we had, and they're not gonna be here tonight. I don't see a reason for them to be here, but the contractor representing this Doot Truck has indicated that they would be willing to extend the paved portion of Christian Hill Road approximately 100 feet, and they would be willing to offer to the town a formal easement for plow trucks to turn around. So essentially, just extending and maintaining the road another 100 feet, this would eliminate there having to be any issue with a private contractor, private property owner maintaining the road. I looked at it. I met with the contractor, and I think it'd be the best circumstances as far as eliminating that issue of having somebody maintaining the town road and the portion of the driveway permit. I wanted to bring it before the board's attention. I could pass a plan around. I told him not to do a design yet, just in case it wasn't approved. I didn't wanna, wanna see them spend any money on it, but this is just the tax map where the contract was created. The diagram, which kind of shows that the pavement will be extended, road section will be 70 feet, and then it'll be essentially 100 feet including the turnaround area. And then I explained it would require a formal easement filed with the registry of deeds. So that way there, if there was ever a change in property owner, we still would have an ability to turn the plow trucks around up there.
I'm up to my side, so.
Pretty straightforward. The benefits are great benefits, because obviously we have a formal easement for the turnaround plow truck. Right now, we're still forming, and they're probably nor having raised any issues with turning around again, but they possibly could.
That's the driveway before that, you turn around, right?
Correct.
You're up to it?
Yeah, yeah. And they seem to be as well. I think the road construction would have cost them a buck, fifty, sixty thousand dollars to complete, but a lot of them have their driveway access and their accessory door in their initial location where they want. So I think it's, I think it's a good compromise for everyone.
It's gonna be the same width of the road that exists and follow that way through?
Yes.
Because they are gonna widen that?
Yes. No, most indeed.
And this new driveway that they put in, is it gonna impact drainage?
No, it's gonna be a hole where they'll have no impact on it. And their driveway essentially, they'll just give us a full easement to their driveway for turning around.
I think it was the solution, right? Am I good?
Good job, Joe.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Joe, you can stay the rest of the meeting if you'd like, but that's all. If you'd like. Is that what that is? Donation issue?
No.
Yeah, moving forward, I'll type up a memo explaining that if you guys won't accept it, we need those circumstances and move forward.
Hey, just while Joe's here, you took me up to Weather Hill, too, and that was interesting. Have you guys seen it lately? Do you see how the layers and everything? It's pretty cool, huh? That's a lot. It's a lot more than I expected, right?
Wow. It's only a fraction of the way there.
I mean, it's, it's time-consuming. They dropped this from here to the window, and they gotta put the layer only 11 inches compacted from the next one, all the way up that high. I found it unbelievable.
Good project.
Yeah, it's a big one.
The weather hasn't been good for it. Yesterday, they're bagging on three while they're trying to throw down. Only got two pallets done yesterday. They've been shooting for four, four or five. Today, they had three down my 11 o'clock, and they were going for another degree. So it was a pretty productive day for that.
Yeah, the heat that they got is just hot water on hoses, and they drove all over the bags. And maybe they had sit ads.
They'll weigh 70 pounds a piece, but it's carrying from the truck to the place by hand while they're doing stuff.
And these bags have been shipped from Pennsylvania?
Yeah.
Hopefully, it's more weather.
Thank you.
Hopefully.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Sure you don't wanna stay, Joe?
I am good.
All right. You're welcome.
Can you go on to assessing services?
Yes. So our contract with what was M&amp;A assessing, and then has been Marazak assessing for general assessing, the revaluation, three-year revaluation last year has expired. Initially, I was leaning towards it's might be time to go out to bid. It's been, I think, eight or nine years between the two forms of the company. But checking with my colleagues, there, there really aren't a lot of options. The major players are Avatar, municipal resources, and I think from what I've heard, they're not really taking on new clients. And I think one Swansea size would be a challenge. So the assessing coordinator and I, David Marazak, today to discuss some of our areas we'd like to see kind of improved. So my recommendation would be to move forward with a one-year general assessing contract and see if we can get some of those improvements. Communication, not value type things, not value issues necessarily, just in terms of administrative items. So get a little more dedicated time from the assessor in the office that we can advertise and let people know when people will be there to answer questions. So that would be a high recommendation at this point, pending the proposal, which I haven't gotten before today. So, or I haven't gotten before the meeting.
Are they willing to entertain a one-year extension?
I think so.
And so what are the, what are the types of challenges you're, you're hoping to overcome within this one year?
Yeah, like I said, mainly primary, mainly improving the cleanliness of communication. So Christian is asking me about this exemption application that I need your assistance with, just getting a prompt answer the first time versus having to send a reminder, and then something else comes up and you get lost track of. So I think she has done an excellent job not letting things get to a point where it is a problem, but if we hadn't, if she wasn't as diligent as she was, I think things might have been falling through the cracks. So that would be the main thing, is just to follow up with the timing. Having people call and say, hey, I called the number and I haven't heard back. Moving to give a call and say, you really gotta call to that.
What was the explanation for the delays?
Well, I guess there wasn't necessarily one. We're trying to focus on having the other member of the team on their partnership be the point person for us. So that, it was better when that was the case, and then that's been a little inconsistent at times. It's been inconsistent in communication. It's been inconsistent. So people are firm on what we need to be getting.
So just so I can sentence Dave that I meant the assessment category, and he does have another person that works with him around, and we wanna do an extension for a year with them?
Right.
And you just wanna see improvement on communication?
Right.
Got it?
There aren't many choices.
No, I think you'll win. It's gonna be selected. We'll wait for vision and select the boundary here. I think that was one of the ones that he had bid. He was based in Woodsville or Aiden Rowland, something like that. Yeah, so.
But did we have a contract with him for so many years?
We did. We had, I think it was a five-year contract. And then they basically, all of the assessing is in five-year cycles, because you have to do the reassessment every five years. So normally, you go on a five-year cycle.
So we're just gonna, instead of doing that, we're gonna go with an extension of one year?
Right. With just the general assessing. So there's a general assessing, and then last, our revaluation last year was what's called a statistical update, which is basically they visit sale properties in places that have been approved, you know, building permit, but they're not trying to visit necessarily every property, which is lower cost. But if you don't do that, if you don't do the visits, eventually, your data is gonna be not as good.
Not exactly.
So usually, you try to, try to alternate. So our next will be a full measure unless we try to do a portion of the town each year, spread over the, what would be three years, and then do map update before the year.
So how does that work? Would, would values change? Or this is for statistical information?
That would be update the physical data, but the, but the full update of the tables and everything was still happening the last year. So if they found out you put on a shed in their garage, you didn't get a permit for it, you'd get picked up in the end.
How did you know?
Right up there in the open.
They've been to your house.
They've worked well for us, just in general. It's been a good relationship.
Need a motion for that?
I think not at this point, because I'll bring back the contract when I get everything approved out. So just consensus to not do an RFP at this time.
All right. Contracted IT services.
So this is an annual contract that we have with Twin Bridge Services. I think normally I just sign them because it's not a long-term commitment, and it's more or less status quo. But where this one's, there's a factor that's changing, which I mentioned in the memo. When we, so we had two, I think, servers in the town. It was two total, an email server and then a file server. A year and a half ago or so, we retired the email server. Now we have a web-based mail that I think is working much better than the old version. People are actually able to make it work on their phones and different things. But part of that process was getting accounts for Microsoft, for 365, for all those email accounts, which requires an annual subscription. So the annual subscription was in the initial project, retired the email server, while that first year is over. So now they're incorporated into our support contract. So there's a larger than normal increase. So partly just making you aware of that. And I mean, the year has begun, so it's moving a little bit to go in a different direction. So it's mainly just making you aware.
You planned that to do?
I wrote it, because I didn't get it till it was close to the end of the year anyway. But it's another takeaway. There are more options for IT services, but I think Alan's municipal-specific knowledge and experience has been really critical.
Is that a motion?
That'd be great.
Tell me that.
There is a motion.
Motion made in second to authorize the town administrator's signed contract with Twin Bridge Services to contract the IT services for 2025. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, the camera's working.
That's Alan, right, that I met?
Correct. Yeah, so you're not with the camera. I press it there. So I don't think, I don't even have to strike anything out, but next time you stop by, show me.
How cool is that? Good. Where, where is it? Where is the video? Is it in your office?
It's right on your screen that you have, right? Because I watched it, right? And it's just a delay, too. It's not too much of a delay, is it?
I don't know if it's a consecutive delay or if it's live or whatever.
It's pretty cool. I watched it.
Next time you're gonna drive through, give me.
I watched it for three days. I sat there, brought popcorn and everything.
You did?
Yeah, I wanted to.
Did you talk to Lisa?
Yeah, we were on the speakerphone.
So I haven't talked to Alan, but we probably wanna, you probably wanna wait until spring, but who makes that, do you get it?
What would be the next one, Michael? Would it be the one year?
Probably.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's the next, next most traveled and next most problematic.
Right.
So you probably won't wait for warmer weather, as we just cut out there. That's why. It'd be worse for the luggage and earth bags.
Trying to rush it. Wire's hanging down.
What's our plan for this year? Are we completing the bridges? Or are we?
I think, but we have money to do the rest of them. I don't know, where slates are gonna mount higher. I don't know.
Completing this guy's job, I suppose? Okay, because this is, is it gonna be a test run?
No.
No.
Wings was a blink.
Well, you wanted to do the first, you didn't want to do the first one as like a pilot, just to make sure it worked and Casey weren't anything versus proving all the ones. To that part, yes, but part of the whole process.
I think we should keep, keep moving forward with them, if they're working.
Including slate?
Including slate.
I think that it's going in a good direction. I know all these pitches that are going up there, but people are getting calls now and stopping from going over. I think we're going in a good direction, don't you? I think it's slowing down the activities. I think it's a lot better than what we started, before we started.
Do you wanna show her my picture? That was a particular idea every, he could make the tree, the tree, the shower, and sort of the cats, but being remarks. Those are on there every year. Just like now, I look back and it hasn't been, it's been a while, so.
What am I looking at, just to?
Cover of the annual report.
Oh.
It's a cover, it's a cover bridge, Jimmy.
I didn't know what I was supposed to do. There was a squirrel in there, so. That's sharp. It's great. Good choice, Mike, for that comment.
Request an expenditure, design expenses related to Lower Winchester Street, West Swansea Road project.
The last meeting we discussed that somewhat, I won't say me, but letter from the city of Keene, which was outlined, the project cost, which was great, and we were like, is this just letting us know? We didn't confirm. Yes, it is. They are looking for reimbursement for our share of the design expenses so far, which at 3% of the 20%, comes to a little under 2,800 bucks so far, and then another 7,800 expected with the rest of the time, which is currently in progress. So where this is, most of our road-based fund are town roads. Where this is the town road, I think we invest in H Affordable Housing Grants is a good miscellaneous fund. The Municipal Transportation Fund is a little bit, could be made, because it is for sidewalks, largely is our part of the project, is sidewalks, but, or the sidewalk fund. So I think there are, but I think this is the, some other option. But I think this is the cleanest option. So we'll keep for, for that, I have here about 11,000.
What's 11,000?
For the, for the current invoice and the rest of it.
So this would approve the balance? The, the full 10-5, 10-6?
Right.
I'll make the motion. Second. You should vote in second to authorize the expenditure of two.
Eleven.
Of us two.
Us two.
11,000 for design work associated with Lower Winchester Street, Route 10 redesign project on the NBS NH grant. All in favor, say aye.
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 Yes, sir.
West Swansea Fifth District Development Plan.
So it's not in the email package. It's kind of down to the wire, but included in here, it's about 10 pages. You don't have to review it all, but it's all should be very familiar. Starts on.
What page is it set on, Mike?
28. So I think, I think this is something we need to go with the hearing we have next week as part of the budget war hearing. So it's basically the development plan. So Adam, Adam did a lot of work on this, sent it to Stu Biddle to review, and he said it looked fairly good. I had a couple of questions, but overall, I think it's pretty good. So as part of this process, we have to let the school district and the county know about the tip, because the area is kind of keeping some revenue away from them for a little while. So I mentioned that Jeremy, Ralph Byrne, gathered them on Monday. Other things, I mentioned this, he's generally aware that, you know, a copy of this, now it's pretty well drafted.
Is that something that we just have to make them aware of, or do they have, do they have no say?
They don't have to approve it. They can provide feedback, but it's not.
But we have to make them aware, because it cuts down money.
That will go to them for.
It's going for the.
Per period of time, yeah.
And Billy, we did talk about it, send them there past Pod, and we're gonna leave it, because we can, we can add later, if we have to.
Supposedly closing tomorrow.
Hmm?
Supposedly closing tomorrow.
Is that right?
I don't know, I think about the deep. Surprised me. I hope there were any good fire suppression. Seriously.
Right.
Time to work.
Sure. So I had called, called out yesterday to go on the draft warrant. No major changes, couple of minors. Well, actually, one kind of majorist change, but. So Article 12 on here with page 51, been mentioning that, I'm not sure if we needed it or not, it's what we do, just to see if the town board can create a water fund to service an air freshener account for expenses and revenues related to municipal drinking water, being contingent with the funding for the purchase improvement system. The other wrinkle to this is there's a statute specific to acquiring water utilities, which I have no idea. And those articles have huge specific kind of sound requirements, but caveat, so they have to be a two-thirds vote. Raises the bar. And can't be brought back for consideration for, I believe, two years. So it's not like you keep bringing it back. So just, just something to be aware of there. So it's not updated as two-thirds on here. We both wanted to review the statute and then discuss it.
So which one is the two-thirds?
Article 12.
To create a?
To basically acquire, yeah, I don't know if it'll actually be, it might look differently next time you see it, but to adopt a water, except a water company, I guess, or buy a water company, requires the two-thirds vote.
Can you break that down for me a little better, then?
It's just a higher threshold, so it needs to get like 67% of voters for it.
Yeah, I understand that. So we just need to do that, because we're starting a new thing.
Right. Yeah, it's just something specific to acquire water.
So, so Article 5 is three-fifths, and Article 12 is two-thirds?
Right. Unless there's an investment, which we're gonna both kind of research and connect back, unless there's a way we can somehow combine, cover them both. He thought we still had to have two, but yeah, I know it's kind of weird to have the two different ones with different thresholds.
So, so if Article 5 fails, okay, I got it.
We won't be doing 12.
Right.
So if Article 5 passes and Article 12 fails, then what will be?
Wait two years.
We can buy it.
A creative water.
We can buy it, right? Based on Article 5?
I would check the, of the five, of the water, if we can buy it and not operate it, or?
That's what leads to the question.
What if 12 passed? What if 5 passes?
But why wouldn't, if, if Article 5 passes, why wouldn't Article 12?
Could you go from 60% to 67?
Oh, yeah, that's right. It's a big.
Good question. Good question to ask.
Billy, that was a good question.
Gee.
Turn that one here.
Just the case. But I hope people understand how critical it is, just for the people that are on the system, never mind the ones we wanna add.
Yeah, it goes through.
Well. Lot of wells.
Lot of water.
No, a lot of wells. They'll have to drill it.
Oh, yeah.
Who knows? Somebody else could buy it.
River wells, we step in, it just demands sort of what we have.
Let's go back. Send this representation.
What's that?
Send this representation.
I don't think so. The other piece, and of course, it did come through, Article 14. So there's a pretty decent section in the middle. Just for, I think this section could be removed. We wanna make that shorter.
The exemption shall be granted?
Yeah. We wanna make it shorter, because a lot of this redundant, because we're re-adopting it. So we probably could, we wanna shorten that, which I know usually we try to shorten if we can. So 14 is the commercial and industrial tax exemption. So actually, it's, it's, so it's the, starting with the second sentence, the intent of the exemption is to provide incentives, et cetera, and then ending after board of selection for the, for the purpose of.
And they have to take all that out?
We could. So if you think it's helpful to have that in there, we can keep it if you wanna make it as short as we can.
You put it in the voter guide, don't you?
We could put it in the voter guide, yeah.
I think we should take it out and put it in the voter guide.
Oh, I'm sorry. I agree. I think it's important for people to understand we have it, and it's, hasn't been utilized all that much, but if we're able to, well, the, that 72, or 79E, sorry.
That one hasn't been utilized at all.
I thought 79E was here.
No, they were, they were also, they were, this one.
They were some of the.
One dollar for our brewery, the two. Is that what your report shows?
Yeah.
That's a good report. I asked Christine to put together what we've got out there for exemptions and credits. That's fiscal year '24, right? Or is that? That's fiscal year twenty-four, right, or is that encompassing tax rate?
Should be for, yeah, twenty-four. Because that flow, that would be the tax rate, it's for twenty-four.
We're better shaped than keen.
The exemption capital of District County. And then one other where you think that would. Article fifteen, which is a petition article about five selectmen, that language is prescribed. Meaning we got a petition for that, because we got set wording, so even though the petition said something somewhat different. That's just prescribed.
Can't be amended at all then?
We've got some legal advice on that, maybe we can discuss it.
Just one. So this doesn't, doesn't alter what the petitioners want, this is just language that's.
Right, if you get, if the town receives a petition trying to amend, trying to change the number of selectmen, the statute says this is what it will say. This is the budget. And then Article sixteen, which is the other, one of the other petition articles, does it have appropriation as well? That's some idea of recommendation from the selectmen. Either now or before we finalize the warrant.
What type of recommendation?
Intervent or non. Because the appropriation of the selectmen is obviously, is a recommender or not. So like the five selectmen is not a, it's not a dollar.
Do we have to do either one?
Not, yeah, not the, not the five selectmen one, but the other one.
Anything to do with because of the monies involved in sixteen?
Correct.
Is it before or after the budget hearing?
Either one.
Delivered?
Before delivered, because that's the end of the warrant.
So that would be.
Then we also have the opportunity at deliberate after to change if there's a demonstrative change.
Correct, it's a change of recommendations for the power.
But going into it, there needs to be an indicator and then afterward, just like with all the other mighty articles.
Right.
Long ways from the recycle, it's cold out there today.
Sure, you need your sewage. We have to get the light to warm up too. I did, I'm sure you don't want to go by line, but on the budget, I did give you a new printout, just an updated snapshot.
Did you include the update too?
Yes. You want one of these?
I see that.
Don't touch those.
By rights. You stated, you called you stated already?
No.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's the same.
So awareness increases, which will probably be no surprise, but DPW primarily paving outside labor related and then additional position is up about hundred forty thousand, I can give you these after. Hundred forty thousand, police departments up about hundred thirty-five thousand. Fire department, additional part-time hours up seventy-three thousand. Insurance, with the insurance rate increase is up about seven thousand. And personnel administration, which is kind of all the retirement employees related costs up of eighty-two thousand. One thing I was discussing with Theresa that can help decrease it a little bit is next year is a fifty-three paying period week year, but based on the vacant positions and that the wage increase is done from later in the year, I think we can have that back, which is a sixty to seventy-five thousand spread throughout departments, so we'll be known as cool probably anywhere except maybe the personal admin one, but the wealth goes down, with the, with the fringe benefits probably up to seventy-five thousand. General, could I say general systems? General systems is up about sixty-five thousand.
Are we, are we a lot, a lot higher than that?
Sixty-one more higher?
I thought it, which page is it on?
It's twenty-one thirty-four. Twenty-one thirty-four. Yeah, Eric.
Most probably, the color.
General four-four, four-one, four-four, four-one, one, four forty is the biggest.
I see.
Better than eight.
Those aren't his real issue.
I know.
These numbers are actuals are through November, which are still Jason December releases. So we usually use November at the budget hearing and then end of the year for deliberate.
Let's hit it in a nutshell.
Actually thirteen, seventeen.
We'll get it.
We'll be back. And then.
It's because it was six dollars, that's the one, that's the one that I made, meant to make six thousand last year, was six, so that's what I thought, ninety-nine thousand percent.
Oh, so it didn't.
Yeah.
I got you, okay.
So it looks like they made those, it's a good way to check, there's two per question.
And what does that do to you? You can sit anywhere like.
Well, it's only, it's only five or six thousand, so it's the.
Pause on this and come for a bit of Chad and Charlie. Come on up, Charlie.
Listen, the guest on our scene.
We gotta reach here.
Come on over there.
Jeez.
So like I kind of mentioned to you, we're a little overdue to check in and see how things, you know, you've been the board's representative for the planning board for about eight months or nine months so far, so probably just wanted to do a check-in. And then Mr. Brandon came, started talking a little bit earlier, decided to put on pause, but some items related to the wetlands buffer that you wanted to be this board aware of, and then obviously you as there representing them on the planning board.
We just go on with that stuff and I think they want to leave it up to the town to go on, to wetlands stuff. Other than that, not much going on, it's quite a day. How's the experience down on the ground?
You have to learn.
Yeah. Is it, is it something you'd like to continue with next year?
I don't know. I don't think so.
What, what are the reservations?
I don't know. I think it's a little above me.
You're a pretty big guy.
Yeah, the future means it's pretty.
But when I talked with you, it seems like you've been interested in it.
I was, but I don't know. It's not what I was expecting. Like I said, there's a lot to learn, you can't just, to me, you can't just go to their call, and I'm older than their call.
But next year, you'd be a veteran.
Oh, I, yeah.
Well, you got a couple of months to think about it. Well, thank you for doing it.
Yeah.
What you got for us, Chad?
Sure. So good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name's Chad Brandon, civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. And I've been asked to attend this evening's meeting to talk about some of the wetlands, some of the ramifications of the wetlands ordinance as it currently exists for a number of my clients, but also I think in large part is an impact to the, to the community. And I will say that generally speaking, you know, our firm is a multidisciplinary firm, we have thirty-two employees, all, many of them fail, many of them licensed professionals, soil scientists, wetland consultants, civil engineers, surveyors. And so when we look at regulations, we try to be as objective as possible. There's always a goal and objective that the community is trying to accomplish, and then there's a balance with development. There always has to be a balance, and I think that currently your, your wetlands, proposed wetlands ordinance has no balance. It's, it doesn't really contemplate development at all across community. And what I mean by that is if you look at the way the ordinance is written, I think, I think there's a lot of good things and clearly a lot of hard work that's gone into the, the material that's been put together, but I think it's missing some key components that are, that are really going to have a negative impact on development in this community, and I don't want to go over a number of those situations. But when you look at a wetlands ordinance, generally speaking, there's two ways that it can be established. It can be established in your zoning, or it can be established as a conditional use permit through the planning board. We're seeing a trend across the state where the wetlands are really evaluated at the planning level because the planning board is looking at designs that are more advanced, and you can start to look at more details to accomplish goals and objectives, whether it's low-impact development, you know, different design features, et cetera. The ordinance as it currently exists simply says it's a seventy-five foot no disturbance upper period. It says all wetlands, period. It's, the only exception it makes is to the fourth order wetlands, which would be Swansea Lake, the rivers, Wilson Pond. It doesn't apply the most stringent conditions to the most high-functioning, you know, wetlands in town, which is somewhat interesting and, you know, kind of unconventional, but that's fine. What most wetland regulations will have in it are provisions. There's, you know, permitted uses, and it'll list what's permitted, and then there's uses that would be permitted by special exception, and it would list a number of uses there. And then it would have uses that are absolutely unpermitted, like bulk storage of fuel, hazardous materials, things like that, always restricted within a wetlands buffer. The special exception piece, if you're going to keep it in the zoning, is critical because that's where you would want to contemplate things like access to somebody's property. Right now, your regulation is written where it would restrict somebody the ability to access an isolated buildable area. So let's say there's a wetland along a roadway, this condition happens a lot in communities. That wetland needs to be crossed in order to access a couple acres, fifty acres, hundred acres, whatever, you know, the property may be. Right now, your regulations don't contemplate that, it simply says that there's a seventy-five foot buffer that's to be applied to all wetlands. When you think about that, it's actually a hundred fifty feet, depending on where that wetland is situated, because it's a seventy-five foot buffer on one side, seventy-five foot buffer on the other side. And that would require variance. Variances generally are the hardest thing in permitting to obtain. You have to go before the zoning board, you have to, you have to make a case that it's not contrary to the spirit of the public, of the spirit of the ordinance. That's a really hard test to argue when a town adopts a brand-new ordinance, because the assumption is, is if the town adopts it, and this is what they're trying to stop, and so it's an unintended consequence. That's why normally you would see access under special exception, under a use that's permitted by special exception. A special exception lists a completely different set of standards, and if you meet them, it's a permitted use by right as long as you meet these conditions. And so your, the ordinance as it's proposed is, is void of that process. It's, it, it also is unclear how that's going to impact existing properties, because it doesn't contemplate anything, it says all wetland buffers. It doesn't say all new development, or how it's to be imposed on existing properties, and it limits mowing of lawns. You know, there's a lot of people who have existing lawn areas that go within a seventy-five foot buffer, or a seventy-five feet of a, of a wetland area. That's a very onerous regulation. Typically, vegetated areas, as long as you're using, you know, no pesticides or things like that, would be allowed. There's a lot of small lots in town that that could impose, you know, a real burden on. But what I wanted to show is, you know, this town adopted, their last fifth district was Stafford Drive, and we've done a lot of development on Stafford Drive as a company, Brickstone's done, you know, a number of things, and Jim Pipford on Stafford Drive. But recently, we've, we've finally been able to do a few site plans out there, and then we have John Flatley doing that residential project. None of these would have happened with this regulation, would not have happened at all. And I just want to point out, like this is Stafford Drive down here, this is the north side of the property, so you'd have, Route twelve would be up on this northern section. So Stafford Drive goes by the Treasure Fairgrounds, property starts here, just to give everybody some orientation, and you have Wilson Pond Road right here. We just secured, or shouldn't say just, it's almost been a year, secured the contractor-based storage facility approval on, on this property, on this northeastern section. If he doesn't, if he doesn't start pouring foundations or something soon, he's up for an extension, an approval extension. Does that happen if this new ordinance gets adopted? Because his buildable envelope here wouldn't even allow one of these buildings, because your regulation doesn't allow any parking. It's very onerous. Most communities are, are moving to a conditional use permit process before the planning board. They might have a non-disturbance buffer that's twenty, twenty-five feet, but you're allowed to do certain things outside of that. And the conditional use permit process is more like a special exception where it outlines the goals and objectives, which are important. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that a wetlands ordinance isn't something that the community should be contemplating, but I think it's something that really needs to be reviewed in a lot more detail and, and such. All of the yellow highlighted area here represents that seventy-five foot buffer. All of the yellow highlighted area here represents that seventy-five-foot buffer. So what does that mean? It basically means this, this plan would have never happened. And, you know, there would be maybe a really small building envelope there. And these aren't large buildings. You could have maybe a one or two-day contractor-based facility here with the new ordinance. As you go down and work your way west on Stafford Drive, coming down this way, we have one buildable area here, but very restricted. There's not a lot of width here, and you can't do anything in the yellow anymore.
And you couldn't even get to it, right?
Can't get, and you can't get to this one. And then we're, I mean, we're currently, we're actively in the process of doing another commercial building here. And this regulation, quite honestly, jeopardizes this area from even being buildable. It's, it takes it right off the tack rolls. Sadly, it's even worse on the other side, Stafford Drive. So you have a, you have a TIF district in town that, you have all the municipal utilities out here, but there's a potential to not, you know, we might be done on Stafford Drive with this regulation. This is the other side. We again did a, we did a site plan for gridiron construction here that's approved. There is a buildable envelope on this south side, but we would have had to cross this, you know, buffer area before. You know, so that would still be buildable there. The, these areas here, these white areas here, those are forested wetlands. Like this area is, is pretty wet through this section. But there's buildable area back here, and the only way to get there is coming across that wetland in a couple areas. And we've looked at that. We're actually, you know, we've, we're, we were going to start subdividing this and trying to make it more marketable for three or four commercial lots. But this, this regulation really poses a great danger to, you know, to this property. Another property that we've been working on is Paul Thomas's property off of Route twelve. We have all the existing conditions surveyed done. This is Arrow Crest Drive here. You got Twinkle Town, the golf and ice cream shop here. This is all commercial industrial property. He's got an existing parking lot here that goes inside the buffer. What happens to that? It's, it's kind of, how is somebody going to enforce that? Does he have to now take that area out? But all of this yellow is the area that he wouldn't be able to do anything with. It's gone in the regulations. It's a land taking, quite honestly. And I think it does put the town in a position of some liability potentially. And we currently, you can see this concept. We've had this concept done with Mr. Thomas for some time. He, you know, his busy season just ended. He came into our office and said, hey, I'd like to go forward with this plan finally. And now we have this regulation that's, that's looming. And it takes everything that he was planning and, and really takes, puts it in jeopardy. So he was looking at a couple of commercial buildings out back. And this would be the active area where the parking would be. This is the shed, the place that sells sheds currently is here. So that would be the buildable envelope on that piece, you know, if, if this regulation passed. I just think that this regulation has a lot of unintended consequences. It doesn't mean that it can't exist, but I think it needs to exist with a conditional use permit process or a special exception process where somebody can say, hey, yeah, we want to go into the buffer and we're willing to advance the design. We're going to do infiltration, we're going to do advanced treatment. We're going to do, you know, some best management practices and try to balance those goals and objectives rather than just saying, no, it's off the table. And this regulation currently written says it's off the table. And I think, you know, my clients have asked me to come before the select board because they frankly want the select board to write a letter not supporting this regulation to the planning board. Because I think there's unintended consequences here that really need to be considered strongly. You know, even, you know, this is just, you know, another, the fire station we were working on. It doesn't, it's not severely impacted, but there's a wetland that goes down along the property line. This would be that seventy-five-foot buffer. You know, technically, we wanted two, two access points. We'd have to modify, you know, that layout and work on that too. This discussion internally in our office has been happening over, you know, basically this week and a little bit of last week when we started, you know, discussing this with a couple of our clients. I can assure you that, that these are just small examples of, you know, free projects that we've been looking at in the community, but there will be much larger impacts. I can tell you, you know, we're looking at another gas station in town. That's compromised, that has the potential to be compromised. There's development on Route twelve, excuse me, Route ten that we're, we were reviewing with people. And when this happens, when regulations get posted, things get put on hold. We have to stop because we have to see how, you know, these, these are going to work out. And, and nobody wants to be the first one in. So it has a real burden on local, local economics and, and people going forward. Don't think the regulation is a bad idea. I just think it's being carried forward in the wrong format. And it's, it's really important for us to share that. Just, you know, we're, our office isn't in this community, but we live in this community. And, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, things are done right. Many of our clients, you know, have done, you know, own property, not only own property in town, but Swansea in large part has done a lot of great things over the last few years. And I think this would be, you know, this would be kind of a move in the wrong direction under the current format. So that's, that's what I have. I mean, I'm, I'm not here looking for an approval like I normally am, but I, I certainly think and hope that the board will consider a, a letter of non-recommendation to the planning board. Their meeting tomorrow night. I can't attend that meeting, so I, I told my clients I, I could at least attend tonight's meeting. I may have another representative from our office go tomorrow, but to the planning board meeting. And it, and I, the unfortunate part about this presentation is I really do think there's a lot of great ideas and concepts in the regulation. It's just, it's just not, doesn't offer good balance right now. It's very much on a no-development standpoint. It doesn't contemplate options for people. You know, somebody wanted to build a building here, has to go before the zoning board for a variance. That's a, that's a hard burden if it's a new regulation. And we actually, we've, we've had, we've had a couple unfortunate cases in this town when they adopted new regulations where zoning board members have just said, the presentation makes sense, but it's a new regulation. So how can you make the argument that it meets the spirit and intent of the ordinance? They can't, in their mind. And it's, I understand that side of it, but, you know, regulations are not written for all properties. It's, it's a, it's a paint, you know, broad brush. So you've got to speak to individual sites. I think it's worth considering. I hope you'll consider it. And I'm happy to answer any questions if the board may have any relative to this topic. I will say that when I read the summary of the regulation, it touches on a number of communities in saying that Swansea's the minority, but it's misleading. And, you know, for example, they bring up Keene. Keene has a seventy-five-foot buffer in their rural residential, rural ag areas. They do. It's a conditional use permit. And so we're allowed to work with that with the planning board. They also have a reduced buffer in their downtown district and commercial industrial districts. Maybe Swansea should consider that rather than wiping out a TIF district, which is what this would, would do. You have all the utilities there, nobody will build to use them. It's a, it would be a, what I would consider unintended consequence. I don't think anybody's evaluated this section in town. You know, Troy is the same thing, conditional use permit. Jaffrey, conditional use permit. They're all mentioned in here as they have a buffer. They do, but they have special exceptions or conditional use permit. Nobody has a regulation that I'm aware of that is, can't do anything in a buffer. They're open to liability at that point. I think there would be lawsuits. There would have to be. If some, if the zoning board said no, that's the only option. And so it lines things up in the wrong direction, in my opinion.
Did you say you're going to send somebody tomorrow night?
I'm going to even try to. It's kind of, it was a last-minute request, and so I'm, I'm hoping to send one of our other engineers there, yes.
And they'll be able to do something similar to this?
Yeah, well, they plan on having them bring this board and, and present the same material. I may have one of my wetland scientists go, you know, and yet, I mean, we're, I think there's good intentions, but unintended consequences the way it's currently written. It really needs, there needs to be some more thought put into how to balance development as well. And landlords' rights, it doesn't, it could be anybody, you know? Another driveway, an accessory dwelling unit. I mean, people are stuck with the problem, many people are stuck with the properties they have. And they don't even realize that that wetland is just inside the woods. You have seventy-five feet to that, your whole lawn's a buffer. Can't put an addition on to a combination accessory dwelling unit. I think there's, there's just going to be a process for somebody to ask for relief that's not a variance.
Chad, back to the fire station that they were working on. Would that have, what you'd have to do, would that add cost to that development of the fire station?
It would change the layout, so it would, you know, it could add cost. Or we'd have to do a retaining wall and have that cost. I mean, there's always, can you do something different? Maybe, but it, even redesigning adds cost, so.
What's that? I said, we know that.
Shut the three loud and out.
Doesn't that get to revise their own ordinance?
Yes, they should. They don't have to legally, but we always have.
Bill, from your comments from last meeting, is that Karl Luthling, what he said? Oh, you're, am I reading that right, from what you, how you felt last meeting?
Very similar, yes. I, I backed off a few days later after I read through everything. And then I went back and read the, the proposed amendments. And if I back to what, what I was saying last week, which is much better said by Chad, but it wipes out Stafford Drive. And, and my point with Stafford Drive was the town made an investment in Stafford Drive. It made that investment in the late nineties. We can all argue whether that was a good place for an industrial park or not. But back then, that was the decision. And that bond is about to be paid off. And as Chad mentioned, that bond put Stafford Drive in, it put the utilities in, and now we're done. And we, and, and the proposal of Tom Van Olson's, that's a very unobtrusive project. It's whatever is three or four, nine thousand square foot buildings that would be contractor-based. Totally unobtrusive, wouldn't be able to be done. And, and I'm the one that Chad referred to with regard to the new ordinance coming in because we, we changed the density requirement in the business zone twice. And, and Chad came.
I was trying to stay away from that.
I know.
Bill told me no.
But I, I said to him, how can we do this? It, it's reasonable, but, but how, how could the board find a rational reason for doing it when the town's just changed its density requirement? And that's the same situation that the zoning board would be in here. What, what I would appreciate if you could just expound on the state regulations with regard, with regard to wetlands because it, that part was not really presented to us. And I'm not totally aware of, of how the state is involved in protection of wetlands currently.
Sure. So the state does not have a wetland buffer. They, the state has juris, well, I shouldn't say that. On any, any wetlands that your ordinance would apply to, the state doesn't have a wetland buffer. They have jurisdiction over the wetland itself. And so, for example, we had a, we, we were looking at an eighty thousand square foot industrial bay building on this site this year. We were hoping it was going to go forward, but the water pressures didn't support the sprinkler system in that location. But we were going to fill this, this wetland peninsula to create, you know, this area. And the state has processes for that where if you fill over three thousand square feet of wetlands, you have to do mitigation. And so you either do onsite mitigation, or you do compensator, or you do an in-loop fee where that money would be spent in the same watershed. And your current regulations would get in the way of that because there would be a variance process required. And so what I mean by that is many local regulations say if you're going to get a state permit for a wetland impact, it's allowed by special exception because you're going through a permitting process at the state that's going to evaluate the functions and values of that wetland system. Your regulation doesn't address that. Maybe the other thing that the state really gets involved in is the shoreline protection, which is the fourth order water bodies. So Swansea Lake, Wilson Pond, you know, the rivers. There's a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot shoreline zone that is associated with those water bodies, or those wetlands. The state has a fifty-foot setback where you can't build any primary structures. But you can put an accessory structure within fifty feet. Your regulations exempt these high-end water bodies and, and defers that to the state. But the state's regulations are less stringent than your, than the regulations that you're proposing, which is seventy-five feet, no impacts. So a perfect example is, you know, Swansea Lake. People are always, they have, you know, water access down to the water. There's a path, there's often a lawn, there's, you know, maybe a patio down there. All of those are allowed within the fifty-foot setback. The building, the house, the structure, the primary structure has to be setback fifty feet. You're right, the current proposal for the wetland regulation would be seventy-five. So for whatever reason, the, your wetland regulation pulls back from those fourth order and says, hey, we're going to leave, we're going to leave this part to the state under the shoreline permit. But you're applying a more stringent regulation to a less functioning wetland. A wetland with less functions and values. I mean, these wetlands on Stafford Drive, there are some good ones. There's a couple ponds in there out in the woods in the back. But most of them are just forested, you know, wetland where, you know, the water's just been channelized a little bit. Some of them have been, you know, altered many, many, many years ago. And they're just, you know, kind of conduits from, you know, from the stormwater. We're applying a seventy-five-foot setback to that. You know, that doesn't make a lot of sense. I mean, in some communities, you do a functions and values assessment on the wetland. And based on the function and value of the wetland, there's different setbacks that you apply. So if it's a vernal pool, very high-functioning wetland, it's a hundred-foot setback. But all other wetlands might be twenty-five, fifty, and then there's a conditional use permit process. I think this is a, this is a very onerous regulation that we have currently written. You know, I would say I've been doing designs in New Hampshire for twenty-five-plus years. This might be one of the more stringent regulations, you know, that I could think of. Hollis, Town Hallis, I think is the only other one that might be more. It's actually not even more stringent. They have a special exception process and they're, this year, they're moving it to a conditional use permit process. So I take that back.
I don't know if that answers your question, but Chad, please try to get somebody there tomorrow at the planning board meeting so this information can be imparted, so people have better understanding what's going on.
I'll, I'll try.
I think we should, I, I really think on the Stafford pack guide, we should use some common sense on, on that since those lots have been there for a long time and try our best to get those developed.
I think that's what Chad was saying, but the proposed amendments don't contemplate that. The contemplation that we object, or I objected to is what Chad brought up, is it's this concept that you can just go to the zoning board and get a variance. You can't just go to the zoning board and get a variance. So it really puts a, I, I think as Chad said, there's great intent. There's a great deal of knowledge and a lot of work that's been put into it. It just needs to go the next step. And I think that's what Chad is, is talking about. And we haven't even talked about, other than Chad and a couple of comments, enforcement. How would, how would it be enforced? Just to give you the example of what I used last week of my, my current house, under this, I can't mow my lawn. Now, if I hadn't been here, I wouldn't know that. If I checked off the box and said, yeah, that, that makes sense to me, and I keep mowing my lawn, and somebody doesn't like me, and they report me to the town, what, what happens then? Or, or my old house where I, where I wouldn't have been able to build my garage. I could have built my garage because I would have needed a permit, so.
No, that, that's why I'm saying some common sense should be.
But it's not, it's not contemplated here.
But it's not, it's not contemplated here.
I know.
So, but again, I think the emphasis, as Chad said, this is all good work, and it's something that we should embrace and try to work with, but we just need to, to take it to the next step, so that we don't lose a Safford Drive.
That's what I'm gonna do, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I brought up Keene for a reason. I mean, nobody, I mean, Keene's not often an example I'll bring up in Swansea, but, but I will say, the downtown district, they have a thirty-foot buffer requirement, the Rural Act, they have a seventy-five. The reality is, is both of those are a conditional use permit. So we're doing a thirty-six unit development in Keene right now, and the Conservation Commission supports the impacts, and we're in front of the planning board getting, you know, we, we have wetland crossings, we have areas that we wanna get into the buffer, and then we have areas that we're giving more buffer, where the wetland's more important and more, less, it hasn't been altered. And the conditional use permit process allows us to have that constructive dialogue with the community. We go on a site walk, we take a look at it, and we, we create a design for the property. It's not just, these are the regulations, and they're applied to everybody. And so that's kind of a more common sense approach, and I think that's a good way to say it. The conditional use permit process allows the boards and the town to adjust designs to a piece of property, because every property's different, while still adhering to the goals and objectives of this ordinance. And I would strongly encourage that that's the process that Swansea considers. I, you know, I've done a lot of projects in town over the years, and most, if not all of them, have had wetlands on it. You know, there's, it's a very, almost all of Route Twelve, that I think of all the properties, the wetlands is like right in the woods, the back of these properties, you know, and, and I know there's other parcels that, you know, we've worked on concepts, and it takes people a long time to, you know, kind of generate the energy to go forward with something, but there's, you know, it does have, it does have a potential to have a negative impact on good development. I appreciate, you know, everybody's time, and I know my clients would appreciate some consideration if the select board can make a recommendation to the planning board that, you know, maybe this regulation is good, but it's, it falls short in some areas, and there needs to be more time, because that's, in our opinion, very factual. So we hope that you would consider that.
Do you have any specifics that, that you would want the board to address in that, if it chose to move that direction?
Well, I think what's important for, you know, professionally, is that the balance, right? I do think that the regulation contemplates a lot of good ideas, but it doesn't contemplate a special exception process, it doesn't contemplate, or a conditional use permit process, and so it stops development in its tracks. And that generally is not, it's an unintended consequence. They've focused on preservation and conservation, but haven't recognized, you know, all of the conditions that could exist, and there's many. It's like we said, this existing site, you know, the existing site across the road, all of the approvals that this town has given, that hasn't, hasn't reached the point of vesting. This regulation has the potential to impact, so it's not just developments coming forward. So I just think that, that the regulation, as it's drafted, falls, it doesn't contemplate all the, you know, the circumstances, and, and it has unintended consequences, and I think that's the terminology that I would recommend using, because the last thing they wanna do is, you know, degrade anybody's efforts. I think there's a lot of good time put here, and, and many of these regulations can exist in their existing format, but there needs to be additional things. Like, someone has to have the ability to access the property. The state, the state cannot deny a permit for access to this piece. It's illegal for the state to deny a permit for someone to access upland areas. The town probably should have regulations that acknowledge that as well. These do not.
So one comment, Chad, I'm on the Conservation Committee as well as the Planning Board, so you can see where I'm at, right? And I appreciate you coming here, you make a lot of good points, a lot of valid points. You know, a lot of times leaving a decision up to the planning board has its own consequences, right? I mean, we're, we're supposed to be smart on everything, but using this parcel right here, you have us, you know, I'm also president of the Wilson Pond Association, we do the water testing. The worst water that we get comes down from a stream from this area. I don't know if it's coming from Homestead, fertilizing near lawn, I have no idea where it's coming from, but that's the worst water, and we don't know that. So in that process, if it was conditional permitting or whatever from the planning board, that really needs to be taken to heart, right? Because that needs to get mitigated somewhere along the way, as opposed to just putting some more stuff here that might be reaching or feeding into the wetlands that are coming down into that stream. The stream's only this big, you know, but it's, it's the worst water that we get into Wilson Pond. So, you know, I'm not saying one way or the other, and people might think I'm, because I'm on Conservation Committee, I'm leaning one way or the other. I want, I've been taking all the information in, and I've gotten reactions from, from this board, as well as the people in the town, for me to process and consider, but I do appreciate you coming here and making those points. It's, it's a shame we didn't, those points weren't made prior to that amendment being written.
Yeah, and we're happy, I mean, I'll, I'll tell you, I mean, we have an office locally, we're happy to meet with the Conservation Commission or Planning Board, talk about, you know, the regulations, and share ideas and concepts of where things can improve. I mean, I will say, a lot of the sites that we design, we design things to meet state standards, alteration of terrain standards. So behind the alteration of terrain permit is a Clean Water Act certification. So if you're designing something to meet the qualitative and quantitative treatment practices that the state requires, that development will not typically have a negative impact on surrounding areas. A lot of communities are adopting those state standards on a local level from a design standpoint, to try to address concerns that you're having. That, that could happen collectively as part of a conditional use permit, so if you're gonna, if you're looking to impact a buffer area, you have to design your stormwater practices to meet state standards. But you can do things like that. We see that, and that's kind of a transition in a, in a lot of communities, because I, I definitely don't discount the concerns. I think there's a lot of common goals and objectives. As a designer, we do that, just because, you know, frankly, we can lean on those regulations and say, you know, when we have people speaking in opposition to a project, we can say, well, this is, you know, being designed to meet these standards. But technically, in town, we don't have to design all projects to, you know, to meet those. So there's, there's a lot of places that the regulations can be improved. You know, we just think it probably needs a little bit more time, because the unintended consequences here, at least I think, I mean, I'm assuming they're definitely unintended, because I, there's so many moving pieces with regulations, that it's, it's hard to hit it, you know, get it right, you know, the first time.
Yeah, one of the other things, the, the point with agriculture as well as residential is the chemicals people use for the fields for the lawns, right? And that's certainly dangerous to the watershed. I was a little bit surprised with the, you said, I think a thirty-foot buffer for commercial industrial, I think you're talking about Keene. That surprises me, because the risk of industrial itself, you know? So, you know, it's, yeah, it's, it's a balance, and, and maybe the conditional use permitting is a way to do it, special use, or permitted use. I mean, you try to define as much as you can, but you, you don't ever seem to catch it all, right?
Yeah, and I think the, part of the critical things that you look at is there's, it's balancing goals and objectives, right? So you have an area in town where you want more density, because you have the infrastructure. It sometimes means that those areas require a little bit more design, so state standard design, stuff like that. And, and a lot of times in the commercial industrial areas, we're doing closed drainage, so we're capturing, we're bringing all the drainage internal, treating it before we're discharging it. So it's not that, that drainage or that stormwater's discharging only over a thirty-foot buffer. When it's discharged, it's clean. And so you just, the design intensity is, is, the design practices are more elevated in those areas, and so, but the communities understand that this is where we want the development, and where we've invested, you know, money in the past, and so it's, it's again, finding that balance. But yeah, no, I don't, I don't doubt that. And a lot of those issues are coming off of the roads, you know, frankly, getting into the stream, often where the problems lie.
That was a lot of information, Chad, thank you very much.
No problem, thank you, appreciate your time, it's a lot.
Thank you.
They catch you here one, huh?
So that doesn't become unannounced?
Or even announced?
Is that good information for you, Mark?
All information's good.
Yeah, but did you, did that change you at all in some of your thoughts?
Um.
I'm just curious, because.
Yeah, I mean.
Because I tell you, in fact, it made me by listening to that, I mean, I just wondered if you.
You have to be very careful if you don't do an ex parte type of statement about pending or elements that we're gonna be voting on tomorrow. I'm gonna be very careful.
Got it.
Well, I, I think I've been very open about it, and I think it's, it's a lot of good work that's been done, and I think it does make sense for us to weigh in, and just on behalf of the community, and utilize some of the language that Chad mentioned with regard to continuing the process to bring in an opportunity for relief, so it doesn't necessarily become a taking. I, I know, with both of the projects are, are planned, but I know exactly what's gonna happen, the Safford Drive gets wiped off the map, and that's not gonna be pretty. And, and it doesn't need to be, because I think Chad's absolutely correct, that there's been a tremendous amount of good work put into the effort and the spirit of, of protecting wetlands. It just needs further expansion to, to be able to bring in relief, whether it's a conditional use permit or a special exception, so that the, the town shows that they're contemplating uses. And I, I think it's, it's great work, I think it's an excellent start, and I think they're forty to fifty percent there, to where they need to be. And my hope is that the, the planning board will, I don't know what the procedure is, but, but essentially withdraw their support for going on the warrant this year, and make a concerted effort to work, bring in people like Chad and, and other land use consultants and attorneys, and, and get a sense of what other communities are doing. Because I, I didn't have the data to be able to object to that page showing Dublin with X amount of feet, Richmond or Troy, and all that, but I knew Keene didn't have a seventy-five-foot buffer that was black and white. I just didn't know what the remedy is. And, and Chad explained that, and, and I think we, we should, we should have something like that as well, so that, so that people have the opportunity. It doesn't mean they're gonna get it, but if they meet the criteria, and it's, and it's a contemplated use, which is what a special exception is, it just gives an extra, extra level of review, which would be the same with a conditional use permit. It's a contemplated use, but they still have to meet these conditions. If they meet them, they get it. If they don't, they don't. So I, the, the one comment I made to Sherry that, that I, I wish was able to have been done, was that this was brought forward in October, and, and I wish that they had understood that, the same as the fire committee, fire station, that it was important to, to bring it to the board, to get feedback. And, and I understand, they ran out of time, and so I'm, I just don't wanna come across as saying it wasn't, it doesn't have merit, because there's a lot of merit, and has a lot of benefit. But my main, my main concern of this, if it goes through, is the fact that it shuts down development. People don't understand, and then we get into the same thing as we got into with the septic systems. Why are you a hundred and twenty-five feet when the state's seventy-five? I don't know. Why do you have seventy-five-foot buffer when nobody else has a seventy-five-foot non-disturbed buffer? I don't know, but that's what the people voted on. So this would give an opportunity, if they took an additional year, to expand on it and bring in other, other viewpoints, and, and help, help put forth an amendment that, that really is workable and, and enforceable. You're always open to litigation. This, we know, is an open door to litigation. So I, I would support, right, drafting a paragraph to the, to the planning board.
You wanna work with Michael on it?
Sure. I don't know about that.
Homework, Mike.
I think we probably wanna keep that out of the, yeah. Just so he doesn't, you know.
You slide, I'm gonna go right now.
I'm gonna see you tomorrow.
I just, yeah, I think this is too vague to push too fast, it's as simple as that. I mean, I think there's a lot to think about here. I think this is a big thing that we need more time, more, more looking into, like you said, just what you said, more exceptions and all this, and it's, it's a lot to this, to just go down it now. I think it should definitely be investigated a lot more.
You've done great work.
I, I think it's a great idea, and I'm all for conservation, but we gotta be reasonable there, we gotta, we just can't push something like this to, it's gonna affect a lot of people, a lot of town, a lot of money, we're talking about a lot. I think it's a big air, a big situation. I'm, I'm gonna recommend the same thing you have.
So you're gonna work with us on it?
I will.
And if you could, job's lined, defer.
I think, I think, yeah, I think the idea's good, that by extending the, I think that also, it may eliminate the petition of going that extra step to a zoning board, you know what I mean?
Or if they did, it would be for a special exception, right?
Right.
So it would be a contemplated use, but, but additional review, like the conditional use permit for the planning board.
Chad. I'm sorry. I did wanna just add one more piece. Part of the reason why the conditional use permit is so, is, is the path that we're seeing a lot of these projects go, our communities go, and when it, when it pertains to wetlands and use inside of a, a buffer area, is, at a conditional use permit stage, you're seeing more design elements. So you see the grading, you see the stormwater management. At a zoning level, people are wondering whether they're turning, if this is a viable project or not. It's, and so you don't, you don't see enough details often at that stage, whereas when you're going for a conditional use permit, you're working with the town planner, and normally that conditional use permit process involves a meeting and site block sometimes with the Conservation Commission, and the Conservation Commission has an ability to, to offer comments on a project. And so it's more, it's more interactive, and so it's, it's often not a no. It doesn't mean the Conservation Commission's gonna support the project, but it offers an ability for, you know, some give and take.
Yeah.
And that process is productive when it comes to, you know, we always, we, we make the case with our clients, you know, often on the backside of the project, that the, the project is often better at the end, you know, because it balances a lot of people's feedback. But the zoning board process is black and white, and so there's no, there's no ability to have a conversation, to walk the site, to talk with the Conservation Commission, to talk with the planner. And so I think that, you know, communities that are pro-development, which Swansea has always come across being that way, you know, in my professional opinion, lean to that conditional use permit process, because it, it opens the door to dialogue. It doesn't mean it's going to be yes, but it, it allows for people to come in with their ideas and, and to, you know, to be more productive in the conversation. And it also allows the Conservation Commission to be more involved in the process. And so that's the direction that I would recommend, because that's the direction that most communities are going now, and I'd be happy to give a summary of the communities that we deal with that have gone that way and are going that way, if that's helped. that have gone that way and are going that way, if that's helpful. And certainly, we're happy to help if there's questions, you know, as this moves forward. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chad.
You too.
Garrett?
Adam, the town planner, just said in the Zoom chat, informational colon, Swansea does not have a conditional use permit process yet.
It's something that Chad is suggesting would be a method to adopt. And have you been talking with Adam or Stefan about that or...?
I have not. I, I was going to reach out to them to talk to them about it, but that's a planning process, so that can be adopted by the Planning Board. And often, that doesn't even have to go, you know, before the town for a warrant.
Doesn't?
By regulations.
Yeah, because it's a change in the regulations.
Does that have to go through public hearing?
It does go through a public...
I think it would, but, but that's a process that, that can be, you know, can be worked. I just think it's a, it's, it's a more productive and pro-development, you know, process. But I, I do plan on talking with Adam about it, and I'll, I'll, I'll try to do that tomorrow.
Yes, Garrett?
Adam said he wants to change it in 2025, and he's going to present it to the Planning Board early this year.
Good lobbying, Chad.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Chad. Thanks, Adam.
What did you just say, Matt?
That will impact these are the two things we've been targeting coming up, because we realize too, I haven't talked with Adam, that we need to get ahead like Mr. Sam. We need to start earlier in the process instead of late in the process, so these things can be ironed out. Because it's always, when you try to write a regulation, and we're doing it quite a few years now, if you do it late, then it's all these problems pick up and people get mad. So if you get a fine month in, and you could even have some not necessary public hearings because they're going to be done at the end of the year, but you can have informational meetings with people about this, that are non-public but public. You know what I mean? And by the way, all of our, all of our meetings are public meetings. Not all is public hearings, but public meetings, except for when we go into executive for legal issues like you guys did. Now, this only happened twice, but I can think of many examples. You would be willing to work with the commission on that. You've always told them that. In fact, we changed one of our procedures to say we want Conservation Commission to weigh in on the project and give us comments before we even hear it. So that we have in it, but also.
Good idea.
And we do.
And you do?
Yes. And any permission is just very valuable.
It's a balance.
It's a balance, yes. So it was on the economic development advisory committee, but I found that my term is far. Found that after.
The overhaul renews.
There are holdovers. Serve until someone else is appointed.
Oh, gosh.
Automatic three new years.
A lost stopper, you used to call it in the military. You think you're getting out, and then, no, you're not.
Automatic reenlistment.
Maybe they don't switch out, will you? Any more than that? What do you think there, young fella?
To me, how, how are the people supposed to get to those little pieces of property from the road? What are they going to spend to get there? That's my, my big thing. You know, you want them to use this piece of property. What's it going to cost them just to get to it?
Might not get permission. You got to get to it.
That too.
It's a part of the, it's a part of the, the process that they go through to determine if it's economics or feasible.
370 some wetlands in Swansea?
Yeah, that were identified in that region.
370 something?
Something like that. That were identified in that region. But, but his point was, the amendment does, does not tie back to that 374. The amendment is wetlands.
Right.
So you got a wetland on your side of the property, I suspect, where you got all your knotweed. It doesn't usually just grow.
Oh, yeah?
So if that's, if that's determined to be a wetland, you can't own much of your own.
I don't. They pull it out.
Yeah. So that's, that's your method, but somebody else might feel differently. But anyway, so...
See that now, I get crashed by a car coming around the corner, 60 miles an hour.
You get that too?
No, it's funny, but now that I have this new route, it's really interesting to try to drive the speed limit with, with people, especially going from 30 to 20, or going from the 40 to the 30.
Woo, on 30, do it.
I'm going to... Yeah, 32.
That's a racetrack. That's the only 500.
I would even go by Mark's house on Lake Road.
Yeah, there's people that, they want to make that a speed limit. But when that knotweed is growing by my house, you can't see who's coming south. And last summer, I almost got killed twice, because I start to pull out, and all of a sudden, where did you come from?
That stuff is highly erratic, too.
Doesn't seem to like peanut oil.
Your favorite eating is three bites. Starting to know where you're going.
It smells so black today. Do you eat it?
Well, we're going to, we're not... You got to save this one, but I'm not going to anything else for now. I think, Charlie, I, Charlie, I, I just would, would ask that you consider what we discussed, Jim and Sly and I, and our desire that, that this be continued through and look out, we come out for the 26 warrant, just so that some of these issues that were brought up could be, could be contemplated and dealt with. So just ask you to consider that when, when you're at the public hearing tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Hey, Bill, I see him twice a week over at his place of employment. So I, I can, I can chew on his ear a little bit.
Twice a week? I throw away a lot of trash. Does he recycle?
No, no.
Close your, close your lane when you see him. Make him go to the other one.
Go to the bathroom.
No, I like to see Chad once a week.
One more bite of the public input apple before we go into non-public?
Well, at, at Town Hall, I, I noticed the back wall has been replaced. I don't, yeah, who, who did that?
Santa.
Huh?
Santa.
Yeah, okay.
You mean the driveway of the fire station one?
Yeah, the wall there that...
It was part of the broken.
Yeah, the one that's broken, that's nice now. How, how do I do that?
Oh, the retake, the retaining wall?
We did it when we get the front. We figured why we had equipment there and everything.
Okay, so, oh, so he did, okay.
Yes, and we saved some money by doing that at the same time we did the front.
Now, was that, was that part of the 54 grand, or is that a little bit more than that?
I think it was a separate, it was, it ended up being a little bit more, or it was around $1,000.
Okay, so we're about 64 where we were at?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. How much, how much is left in that expenditure?
On that expenditure?
No, 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 on the expendable trust. How much is left in that?
I don't have that handy, but we will have that at the budget here.
Okay, because maybe we need to put some more back into that.
The fire station one is pretty good. It's, it's a pretty good amount. The Town Hall one, I think, is pretty well completed.
Maybe you do. Hope some of that, eh?
We still want to do the back stairs, you know, back door eventually.
Yeah, we're getting close on the keypad system.
Right, the keypad system?
The rooms and codes.
Looked them up beautiful. Nice job, everybody did. We stopped a water problem by doing a remake. We dug down and fixed the foundation.
Well, that river, that, that river that was running underneath there, that's been stopped.
We sailed all that when they dug it all up, which that was another thing that we conquered. The wall, everything came up clear, right?
Now, those, the, on the front entrance, we could do from there. Got to put some, some drains on those, you know, like around the rest of the building.
I think they're going to have to put a few gutters, but I think I'm talking about the town guys doing the shingles on that and save us some money too, right?
Oh, oh, I see.
Where we're just going to shingle it over, you know.
Yeah, shingle it in and then put some...
Joe mentioned that he would help us with that, which is going to be great.
Yeah, the rain diverters or...
Yeah, yeah, so they divert the rain off of the front, yeah.
Yeah, one of them is going to go right on the ramp.
Yeah.
But even the inside of the Town Hall, the doors, have you been in it and seen the new counters and the floor and the paint?
He comes to Town Hall twice a week too, so.
But that came all night, so that was our guys that did that.
Recycling, you can go over.
That was our guys that did that, which was, it was nice.
Weekend work.
Yeah, they came in and they, and they saved us a lot of money.
Yeah, I'm retired. I've got a chest to go around looking all this stuff.
No, it's working. I mean, it's hard to do that. We had the guys to do it, and we had the time, so we did it. It really did good for the town.
Yep. Good job.
We were just discussing that in last meeting.
What are we going in under?
A B for hiring.
Okay, that's it for public?
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to make the motion. We go into non-public under B.
All right, well, appreciate it.
You what?
B for hiring.
Well, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Charlie, you ready to work? Charlie, we're ready. Freezing up there? The wet, right?
Oh, it's just, it just...
We're going to give you a big blow up, heat and suit. We're going to get you a big blow up, heat and suit.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Mark, where are you going? On the back?
Yeah.
VIP pack? Good boy.